We'll call the meeting to order of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting Tuesday, October 17th, 2017, in Pennsylvania County General District Courtroom, Edwin R. Shields Courthouse Edition, 11 Bank Street, Chatham, Virginia. Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber?
Here.
Mr. Hagerman?
Here.
Mr. Blackstock?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Barxdale?
Present.
Mr. Warren?
Present. I would ask that you would observe a moment of silence with us, please. Thank you. Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there items to be added to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add a resolution for Robert Mills, Jr.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adding to the agenda, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. May I get an approval of the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda with the added item.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barber, seconded by Mr. Davis. Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barxdale?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Hearing of citizens. Ladies and gentlemen, when you come forward, please state your name and district. We would appreciate your speaking into the microphone so your comments can be heard. The hearing of citizens format does not have question and answer section, but I assure you that the board will be listening to your comments. Each person making comments will have three minutes. When the amber light comes on, you have approximately one minute remaining to speak. I will call you in order if you've signed up. First person signed up tonight is Mr. Will Pace.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Will Pace, and I am a resident of Chatham Blair's district. The last time I spoke before you was two years ago, and it was mainly a public service announcement. And I feel like now is the time again to issue that same public service announcement once again. And it goes like this: Don't put your campaign yard signs in the right-of-way or the median. It's against the law. So what is the right-of-way? It is the state-maintained area of property alongside a roadway on both sides. This area does not belong to any individual property owners. So where is the right-of-way located? Where is the boundary? Good question. There's no really standard, consistent right-of-way distance for every road. It usually ranges between 25 to 150 feet on the center of the road. But usually, there's a few rule of thumbs for the right-of-way. So for example, if you put your yard sign or forbike in between the edge of a road or sidewalk, that's the right-of-way. If you put it in between the edge of a road or gutter, that's the right-of-way. Or in between the edge of the road or road sign, that's the right-of-way. In addition, if you put a yard sign in banked hills on the side of a road, that's also VDOT property and right-of-way. The punishment or the penalty for putting a sign in the right-of-way is $100 from VDOT. I wish the county would enforce that, because it still happens. Every night, I count my blessings that we are not like Fairfax County or Arlington County for many reasons. But in this case, if you go to those two counties, you'll notice that there's so many campaign signs in the right-of-way, especially in the median. It's illegal. And if there ain't road sign, any right-of-way signs in the right-of-way here in Pennsylvania County, whether that's on the edge of the road or in the median, they're coming down. In fact, as citizens, you can take them down, too. VDOT would appreciate it, and many other citizens like me would appreciate that, too. That concludes this public service announcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pace. We're down to consent agenda. No one else signed up for citizens' hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve your consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barxdale?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. As part of the consent agenda, we had two resolutions, and we would like to read those tonight. And Mr. Barxdale, would you read the first?
Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors proclameth, proclamation, pardon me, National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2017. Whereas, one in every four women will experience domestic violence during her lifetime, and approximately 15.5 million children are exposed to domestic violence every year. And whereas, when a family member is abused, it can have long-term damaging effects on the victim that also leaves a mark on family, friends, and the community at large. And whereas, the problem of domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, but crosses economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers, and is sustained by societal indifferences. And whereas, the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse. And whereas, victims should have help to find the compassion, comfort, and healing they need, and domestic abusers should be punished to the full extent of the law. And whereas, victims of the violence should have access to medical and legal services, counseling, transitional housing, and other supportive services so that they can escape the cycle of abuse. And whereas, we encourage domestic violence victims and their families to seek assistance from appropriate victims, services organizations, and the National Domestic Violence Hotline at 1-800-799-SAFE. And whereas, it is important to recognize the compassion and dedication of the individuals who provide services to victims of domestic violence, and work to increase public understanding of this significant problem. And whereas, as a community, we must dedicate ourselves to protecting vulnerable members of our society. We have a moral obligation to work to prevent domestic violence and to address its brutal and destructive effects. Now therefore, in recognition of the important work done by domestic violence programs and victims service providers, the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to work towards the elimination of domestic violence. Given under my hand this Tuesday, 17th day of October 2017, Robert W. Warren, Chairman, Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors; David M. Smitherman, Clerk, Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Mr. Barxdale.
You're welcome, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Resolution 2017-10-05. Robert Mills, Jr., winner of the 2017 Swisher Suites Sun Belt Expo Southeastern Farmer of the Year. Virginia, at the regularly scheduled meeting of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors held on October 17th, 2017, in the General District Courtroom of Edwin R. Shields Courthouse Edition, the following resolution was presented and adopted. Whereas, Robert Mills, Jr. is a Pennsylvania County resident and owner of Briar View Farm, a 2,244-acre farming operation based in Callens, Virginia. Robert and his wife Cynthia are the proud parents of two sons, Logan and Holden Mills, both accomplished in agriculture and actively involved in the farming business. And whereas, on July 31st, 2017, Robert Mills, Jr. was named the Sun Belt Ag Expo Virginia Farmer of the Year. He was nominated by Stephen Bartsch, Pennsylvania County Agriculture and Natural Resources Extension Agent with Virginia Cooperative Extension. Winning the Virginia Farmer of the Year Award entered Robert into competition with nine other highly qualified state finalists across the southeastern United States. And whereas, Robert Mills, Jr. is a first-generation farmer who has been successfully farming for 19 years. Crops produced include conventional and organic flu-cured tobacco, dark-fired tobacco, and bioenergy tobacco, along with winter wheat. He also operates beef cattle and poultry polet enterprises. And whereas, on October 17th, 2017, at a luncheon of over 1,500 people at the Sun Belt Ag Expo held annually in Moultrie, Georgia, Robert Mills was selected as winner of the Swisher Suites Sun Belt Ag Expo Southeastern Farmer of the Year. Robert won this prestigious award not only for his farming success, but also for his extensive leadership and community service, and ongoing commitment to the Virginia agricultural industry. This includes recently being elected as President of the Board of the Virginia Agriculture and Consumer Services, and being named to the Virginia Tech Board of Visitors. Then be it resolved that the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors expresses its congratulations and admiration to Robert Mills, Jr. on becoming the 2017 Swisher Suites Sun Belt Ag Expo Southeastern Farmer of the Year. Be further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Robert Mills, Jr. given under my hand this 17th day of October 2017, Robert W. Warren, Chairman, Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors; David M. Smitherman, Clerk, Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors. We'll have him back. Robert's still down in Georgia, so he'll be back at our next meeting, and we'll present this resolution to him. Thank you, Mr. Scares. We've had several of those national winners here recently, so it fits well for our community. Exciting times and exciting news, so we'll look forward to having you next month. We're bound to a public hearing for rezoning cases. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article 5, Division 6 of the Pennsylvania County Zoning Ordinance, we, the Board of Supervisors, have been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, we are responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that all of our decisions and regulations be directed to these goals, and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and in the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its prosperity. Anyone here to speak to the board regarding zoning cases will be limited to three minutes. At this time, I will open the public hearing for case number one at 718 Par Five Development Company LLC. Mr. Sykes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Case 1, R-17-029, Par Five Development Group LLC has petitioned to rezone a total of 3.06 acres consisting of three parcels located on State Road 729, Kentuck Road, and the Dan River Election District from RC-1 Residential Combined Subdivision District to B-1 Business District Limited. The property is being rezoned for future commercial development, specifically a Dollar General store. Once the properties are rezoned to B-1, then all use is listed under Section 35-346 will be a permitted use. The planning commission with opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request by eight-zero vote. The staff summary and the site development plan for Dollar General are enclosed in your board packet. Mr. Chairman, Zach Avi with Par Five Development Group LLC, Attorney Kerry Hutcherson, and Matt Hastings with Summit Design and Engineering are here to represent the petition.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Zach Avi. I work at Par Five Development Group. We are excited to be able to bring a Dollar General to the area. At the planning commission meeting, there were a few residents that stood up and had some opposition or concerns that I addressed with them. Dollar General is one of the biggest things they focused on, because we hear this comment quite a bit. They have put together a nationwide maintenance team for cleanup, store cleanup, and any type of trash or whatnot, or landscaping issues that might arise from a store. They're going around nationwide to clean up that so that the... Because a lot of the times, we hear, oh, Dollar General's so dirty, or this or that. They are trying to attack that issue head-on. They are... We are... We will be submitting our plan. Our engineers are here, Summit Engineering and Design. We will be submitting our plan to the county, as well as VDOT and DEQ, to get their review and for them to issue any comments, which we will answer, and make sure that the... Our site plan is one that can be approved and that we can move forward. I am here to answer any type or any questions you may have, and if you have any technical engineering questions, I have our engineer who can also answer those questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
No one's signed up for the public this... Mr. Avi, stay kind of close in case the board has questions. I'll close the public hearing portion at 7:22. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, looking at this property and speaking with several other residents who are very in favor of this particular project going into place, I make the recommendation that Par Five Development Group LLC, Dan River Election District, R-17-029, RC-1 Residential Combined Subdivision District to B-1 Business District Limited. I make the recommendation that we concur with that request.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mr. Barxdale. Any discussion or questions from the board? See, roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barxdale?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Property has been resolved. Case number two is Par Five Development Company LLC, Stanton River Election District. Besides, we'll open the public hearing at that one at 7:24.
Yes, sir. Case 2, R-17-030, Par Five Development Group LLC has petitioned to rezone 0.67 of an acre located on State Road 988, Highway View Road, in the Stanton River Election District from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to B-2 Business District General. Once the property is rezoned to B-2, all use is listed under Section 35-365 or permitted use. Again, this property is being rezoned for future commercial development, specifically a Dollar General store. The planning commission with opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request by eight-zero vote. Staff summary and the site development plan for Dollar General are enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, again, Zach Avi with Par Five Development is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you know or may not know, the economical advantages of bringing a Dollar General to the county, not only with tax-based increase, but also with the over $1 million worth of construction cost. We also... Something we want to point out every time we come to a county is that when we are finding the subcontractors that work on these jobs, we try to hire local. So we will be trying to find local subcontractors to do the job. So that's money staying in the county, and we're really excited to bring these stores to the county, and we want to be good neighbors, and whatever that takes, that is what will happen. So I'm open to any questions. Also, our engineers here for any technical questions. Thank you.
No citizen's signed up for this one either, so I'll close the public hearing portion at 7:26. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we rezon from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to B-2 Business District General on .67 acres located on State Road 988, Highway View Road, in the Stanton River Election District. This parcel would be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the county.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barxdale?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Case 4, I will open at 7:28. Gloria K. Hall and Olivia Salzer, Callens-Gretton Election District. I probably missed that election.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, case 4, R-17-032, Gloria Hall and Olivia Salzer have petitioned to rezone 2.13 acres located on State Road 969, Sagow Road, in the Callens-Gretton Election District from B-2 Business District General to RC-1 Residential Combined Subdivision District. Purpose for the rezoning is to facilitate future sale of the property. Once the property is rezoned to RC-1, then all use is listed under Section 35-267 or permitted use. The planning commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request by eight-zero vote. Staff summary is enclosed in your board packet, and Mr. Chairman Gloria Hall is here to represent the petition.
Ms. Hall? No citizen's signed up, so we'll close the public hearing at 7:29. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, case 4, R-17-032, zoning request, B-2 to RC-1. Gloria K. Hall and Olivia Salzer are requesting to rezone the property from B-2 Business District General to RC-1 to Residential Combined Subdivision District. I examined the property on October 14th, 17, which falls under the county comprehensive plan, and I request it be rezoned RC-1.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hagerman, seconded by Mr. Blackstock. Any discussion or questions from the board? Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barxdale?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. We'll move to case number five, Ronald Sykes, Tammy Sykes, Callens-Gretton Election District. We'll open the public hearing at 7:30.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Case 5, R-17-033, Ronald and Tammy Sykes have petitioned to rezone 10.23 acres located on State Road 978, Lakeside Road, and on State Road 965, Payne's Road, in the Callens-Gretton Election District from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A-1 Agricultural District. Purpose of the rezoning is to allow for construction of a 1,900-square-foot shop and storage building. Once the property is rezoned to A-1, then all use is listed under Section 35-178 or permitted use. The planning commission with opposition recommended denying the petitioner's request by vote of six to two. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman Ronald Sykes is here to represent the petition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The only reason I'm here today is District Callens-Gretton. I purchased 10 acres. I just had it moved to move from Franklin County. The only reason I had to move is my mother got sick. She had a massive stroke, and it was either the choice to sell her house or sell my house. Her house has been in our family for three generations, and this will be handed down to my son. When we purchased the property in Franklin County, I did not plan on moving. I already had my shops. I had a storage building for my equipment, stuff like that. I purchased this 10 acres for the same reason, just to build a shop or just a storage building, you might as well say, to keep all my stuff in. And the purpose of putting my son, a probably a single-wide up there. And the only difference that I just talked to a friend of mine, which is Dicky Deal, which is a property that was right beside mine, that joins my property, and he said that if, you know, that I could do that, if I could get with y'all's permission to do that, I could just put a single-wide in for my son instead of having to spend another $35,000 or $40,000 just to put a double-wide in. And I have pictures here. When I was first here, the first time for the hearing, I was blindsided. I didn't have a clue that anybody would even have a problem with what I was doing. I don't want to open up a dairy farm. I don't want to care nothing about farming. The pictures that were proposed the last hearing were taken on my property by trespassing. You cannot see anything that you're seeing in pictures right there from the road. I have pictures right here showing exactly what you see on my property. When Mr. Calvin Hurt excavated my land, I told him to leave 25-foot of wooded area before he cut my property, and he cut me in a driveway, and he cut out my property for my storage building. You cannot see my stuff from the road. I have pictures right here. If anybody wants to argue about trash and junk, the... My neighbors, the first one when you pull in, he has more trash than it looks like in a dump. He's got about 19 lawnmowers. He runs a business out of his residence right there. And that's exactly the first place when you pull in to Lakeside Drive, or Lakeside Road, I'm sorry. And I mean, I don't understand what the problem is with what I want to do. I don't like this in my community, but I can't do anything about it unless I come up here and say something about it. But I'm not throwing anybody under the bus here. This is their property. The way I see it, unless somebody makes them change it, that's on them. What I would like to show you, if you don't mind, can I give these to...
Mr. Sykes.
Okay. If we dispute this a bit or accept this...
I don't want to...
Oh, that's fine.
The first two are pictures of the neighbors when they first come in my neighborhood. And written on these right here is exactly explaining exactly where we're at. This is Lakeside Drive and Payne Road, exactly where my property is. Here's my driveway. You can see that. You can see where you pull into my driveway, and you can see how far the neighbor that so-called says this stuff is, her eyesore to her. You cannot see anything. Her driveway from my driveway is always 400 feet. And they act like it's right in their front yard, where they can look out their kitchen window and see that. And it's not like that. So I just want to let you know, anything I do to my property, I keep it neat and I keep it nice. And I do not have anything exactly like the pictures that I'm showing you right there. And I'm not going to mention any names of the neighbors that have that mess in their yard. That's on them. That's got nothing to do with me. But believe me, my property does not look like that. The only thing I have is the pictures you have right there, like I said. And when these pictures were taken, evidently, I don't like... I can't prove anything. I can't say anything. But somebody just, you know, had a good chance of removing all my posted trespassing signs on top of that. So, you know, it is what it is. And that's all I was going to say. And that's all I want, is just to build my... Build me a storage building, pole barn, and eventually put it... I'll put a well and a septic in, and just so I can have AEP get the power, and then have a mobile home put in for my son. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes. If you'll sit up close, because we may have some board questions or comments. We do have one citizen signed up, Tommy Nevin, or McKenna Jordan. We do have one citizen signed up, Tommy Nevin for McKenna Jordan.
Callens-Gretton District. I'm Tommy Nevin. This is the property owner, McKenna Jordan. And I'm glad Mr. Sykes mentioned the junkyards that are beginning to form on Lakeside Road and Payne's Road in our, in her neighborhood, because there are now seven more names added to the petition that you have in your packets. And those pictures were taken because residents were having to be stopped in the road, on Payne's Road, while a tractor pulled in a box trailer into the land that he's mentioned, the 10 acres. And at that time, unless it is changed, you have pictures in your packet of three box trailers, two on wheels, one that is not on wheels, and what appears to be scrap metal. The application was for an adjacent structure. There is no structure there, so it cannot be adjacent. You're talking about a neighborhood that I have invested, Ms. Jordan has invested her life savings in. It is a residential suburban neighborhood. All of the land around there, except for an adjacent property to Ms. Jordan, was zoned for a mobile home park. The area in the, is a quiet neighborhood with a great deal of activity from children, bicycles, horseback riders, and walkers. The opposed zoning change entails 46 permitted uses, which can be anything. The rumor mill is rampant about how Mr. Sykes plans to use the property, and one of those being parking and storage of RVs and boats. I have no evidence of that. He is already in violation of the zoning laws by bringing the scrap metal and the box trailers and a job trailer and whatever you saw in the original pictures in your packet. The residents who live on Lakeside Road and Payne's Road oppose the change from A-1 Residential Suburban Division to A-1 Agricultural District. I would appreciate, Ms. Jordan would appreciate you keeping this neighborhood intact by denying the request for an adjacent structure.
Thank you, Ms. Nevin. Thank you, Mr. Jordan. That completes the citizens that signed up, so I'll close the public hearing at 7:37. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, Ronald Sykes and Tammy Sykes are requesting to rezone the property from R-1 Residential Suburban to A-1 Agricultural District. I examined that property, or at least where the sign was going into that property, and on October 14, 17, and took the pictures that I passed across. And I saw nothing to indicate that it was agriculture. I did, I did see the pictures that I took there, and I still didn't know if I was at the right place or wrong place. But the place that I examined, I will certainly, I examined the property and took the pictures. I saw nothing to indicate it was agriculture property in the least. So, I'm going to request that this, request be denied, and that if Mr. Sykes can do something with it, make it look more agriculture, then that's, that's fine. But at this time, I'm going to have to request that it be denied.
Motion made by Mr. Hagerman, second by Mr. Blackstock. Any questions, or Mr. Sykes, or any discussion? Seeing, roll call, Ms. Whipple.
Mr. Barber.
No.
Mr. Hagerman.
No.
Mr. Blackstock?
Roll call.
I'm confused.
Yeah.
You need to say yes.
He made the motion to deny.
He made motion to deny, so if you agree with him, yes. The district.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I'll make, I'll continue with the motion to deny, so I'll vote yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes, I think.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Bartstow.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Motion to rezon has been denied. Case number six, Joseph A. Craddock and Jennifer, R. Craddock, Stanton River Election District. Mr. Sykes.
Yes, case six, R-17-034, Joseph and Jennifer Craddock have petitioned to rezone 0.1295 of an acre located on State Road 670 Deerview Road in the Stanton River Election District from A-1 Agricultural District to R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District. The purpose of this rezoning is to combine with an adjacent parcel of land that's already zoned R-1. Once the property is rezoned to R-1, then all use is listed under section 35-222 will be a permitted use. The planning commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request by eight-zero vote. Staff summary is included in your board packet, and Mr. Chairman Jay Craddock is here to represent the petition.
We'll open that public hearing at 7:41. Mr. Craddock. He's not here. We had no citizen signed up either, so I'll close the public hearing at 7:42. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we rezon from A-1 Agricultural District to R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District on .1295 acres, part of a 28.09 acre tract located on State Road 670 Deerview Road in the Stanton River District. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, second by Mr. Barber. Any discussion?
Just briefly, Mr. Craddock is conveying this small portion of property to a neighbor free of charge, and the property, based on current requirements by the county, has to be rezoned in order for him to give it, for them to combine it parcels, so that's why we're here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Wrong call, Ms. Whipple.
Mr. Bartstow.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman.
Yes.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Case seven, Michael L. Hughes, Chatham Blair's Election District. We'll open the public hearing at 7:43. Mr. Sykes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Case seven, R-17-035, Michael Hughes has petitioned to rezone four acres located on State Road 883 Campview Road in the Chatham Blair's Election District from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A-1 Agricultural District. Purpose of the rezoning is to combine with an adjacent parcel of land already zoned A-1. Once the property is rezoned to A-1, all use is listed under section 35-178 or permitted use. The planning commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request by eight-zero vote. Staff summary is enclosed in your board packet, and Mr. Chairman Michael Hughes is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Hughes, do you have anything to add? No, sir. Thank you. Stay close in case somebody asks a question. We'll close the public hearing at 7:44. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we rezon from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A-1 Agricultural District on 4.0 acres located on State Road 883 Campview Road in the Chatham Blair's Election District.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, second by Mr. Barber. Any discussion? This is in my district, and I've been out to the property. I also attended the planning meeting, and it is in keeping with the comprehensive plan, and we're just thankful for what you're about to do up there, and gives you better access to continue your operations, which I will be supporting. Roll call, Ms. Whipple.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Bartstow.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Hughes, for the rezon. Case eight, Robert E. Daniel Revocable Trust dated 9/24/97, Callens-Gretton Election District. Mr. Sykes, we'll open the public hearing at 7:45.
Yes, sir. Case eight, R-17-036, Robert E. Daniels Revocable Trust dated 9/24/97. Mr. Robert E. Daniels trustee has petitioned to rezone 36.23 acres located on Route 40 West Gretner Road and on State Road 626 Smith Mountain Road in the Callens-Gretton Election District from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A-1 Agricultural District for agricultural purposes. Once the property is rezoned to A-1, all use is listed under section 35-178 or permitted use. The planning commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request by eight-zero vote. Staff summary is enclosed in your board packet, and Mr. Chairman Mr. Daniels is unable to be here, so Mr. Ben Davenport will be here to represent the petition.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. Do you have anything to add, sir? No, sir. Thank you, sir. Please stay close in case they, I've got questions right here. I'll close the public hearing at 7:46. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, Robert E. Daniels Revocable Trust dated 9/24/97, Robert Daniels trustee is requesting to rezone the property from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A-1 Agricultural District. And the petitioner would like to rezon for agricultural use. The comprehensive plan for the general area use is A-1 Agriculture, R-1 Residential Subdivision District, RC-1 Residential Combined Subdivision District, B-1 Business District, limited B-2 Business District General, RPD Residential Plan Unit Development. I examined this property on 10/14/17 and request this property be rezoned to A-1.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hagerman, second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion or comments? Roll call, Ms. Whipple.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Bartstow.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Mr. Davenport, property resolved. Thank you. Anything to add, Mr. Daniel? Yes, sir. Case nine, Mary L. Dawes, Callens-Gretton Election District. We'll open the public hearing at 7:48. Mr. Sykes.
Yes, sir. In case nine, R-17-037, Mary L. Dawes has petitioned to rezone 1.421 acres located on State Road 644 Cooksburg Road in the Callens-Gretton Election District from A-1 Agricultural District to RC-1 Residential Combined District. She would like to rezon the property to subdivide the property. Once the property is rezoned to RC-1, then all use is listed under section 35-267 or permitted use. The planning commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request by eight-zero vote. The staff summary is enclosed in your board packet, and Mr. Chairman Bill Dawes and Betty Atkins are here to represent the petition.
Mr. Dawes.
Yes, sir.
Anything to add?
Yes, sir. It was two houses on the property, and we're just trying to get both of them rezoned. Yes, sir.
Anything else?
No, I don't think so.
We had no citizen signed up for this one either, so I'll close the public hearing at 7:49. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, case nine, R-17-037, the property's being requested to rezone from A-1 to RC-1. I examined this property on 10/14/17. It falls under a comprehensive plan, and I'm going to recommend this property be rezoned to RC-1.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hagerman, second by Mr. Bartstow. Any questions or comments? Seeing, Ms. Whipple, roll call.
Mr. Bartstow.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman.
Yes.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Mr. Dawes, property resolved.
Sir, I didn't understand you.
Right, been resolved.
Both of them.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Have a good evening.
I am be on your agenda, Pennsylvania County Code, potential review of the public hearing, hearing one. Public hearing received citizen input on a proposed amendment to Pennsylvania County Chapter 36 P Assessment. Number one signed up to this, so I'll open the public hearing at 7:50 and close it at Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, can I give a little? Yes, sir. Previously, the board authorized county staff to have courthouse facilities inspected by the state to see if they were fully compliant with all Virginia courthouse facility guidelines. The report came back that they were not. Therefore, Virginia Code, Section 17.1281C, allows us to raise the fee that's tacked onto certain cases from $3 per case to $5 per case, and that money is set aside and is pooled to allow for courthouse construction, renovation, or maintenance in the future. So, this code change to Chapter 36 of the Pennsylvania County Code, which is on page 77 through 81 of your packet, basically just changes the fee from $3 where it is currently to $5 as allowed by Virginia Code.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion from the board? Now, I'm going to take the board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the amendment to Chapter 36 P Assessment of the Pennsylvania County Code as presented in the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Bartstow, second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, Ms. Whipple.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Bartstow.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Mr. Cradie, you know, you business award contracts for courthouse jail study, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board is aware, a committee consisting of stakeholders in the courthouse and justice facilities formed and requested that our board complete a comprehensive needs assessment on both our jail and our courthouse facility. Sheriff Taylor, Judge Moreau, Judge Reynolds, and Circuit Clerk Mark Scares convened and reviewed proposals for this study. They negotiated with their top selected firm, Mosley Architects, and they recommend that the comprehensive justice needs assessment of the county courts and jail facilities be awarded to Mosley Architects in the amount of $177,782, and authorize the county administrator to sign all necessary documentation.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, second by Mr. Barber. Any discussion? This is in my district, and I've been out to the property. I also attended the planning meeting, and it is in keeping with the comprehensive plan, and we're just thankful for what you're about to do up there, and gives you better access to continue your operations, which I will be supporting. Roll call, Ms. Whipple.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Anything else?
No, I don't think so.
We had no citizens sign up for this one either, so I'll close the public hearing at 7:49. Board's pleasure.
Ms. Chairman, case nine, R-17-037, the property is being requested to rezone from A1 to RC-1. I examine this property on 10/14/17. It falls under a comprehensive plan and I'm going to recommend this property be rezoned to RC-1.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hagerman, seconded by Mr. Barxtown. Any questions or comments? Scene nine, Ms. Whitman, roll call.
Mr. Barxtown?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Mr. Dawes, probably can resolve.
Sir, I didn't understand you.
Probably can resolve.
Both of them.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Item B on your agenda, Pennsylvania County Code, potential review of the public hearing, hearing one. Public hearing received citizen input on a proposed amendment to Pennsylvania County Chapter 36 P Assessment. Number one signed up to this, so I'll open the public hearing at 7:50 and close it at Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, can I give a little bit of information? Previously, the board authorized county staff to have the courthouse facilities inspected by the state to see if they were fully compliant with all Virginia courthouse facility guidelines. The report came back that they were not. Therefore, Virginia Code, Section 17.1281C, allows us to raise the fee that's tacked onto certain cases from $3 per case to $5 per case. And that money is set aside and is pooled to allow for courthouse construction, renovation, or maintenance in the future. So this code change to Chapter 36 of the Pennsylvania County Code, which is on page 77 through 81 of your packet, basically just changes the fee from $3 where it is currently to $5 as allowed by Virginia Code.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion from the board? Now, I'm going to take the board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the amendment to Chapter 36 P Assessment of the Pennsylvania County Code as presented in the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barxtown, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, Ms. Whitman.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barxtown?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Item 10B, Foster Future 4-D Foster Care Grant Appropriation.
The Department of Social Services recently received notification that they are receiving a grant from the state for additional funding to help aid in supplementary funding for foster care in the amount of $27,830. This grant does not require a local match, but it does have to be appropriated for expenditure into the FY18 budget. So we, as staff, would like to recommend that these funds be added to the social services budget for FY18.
Thank you. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appropriate a total of $17,830 to the Foster Future 4-D Foster Care Line item in the Pennsylvania County Department of Social Services budget.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barxtown, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the motion? I'll just say one thing. Any grant we can receive that doesn't require a match is a good thing. Thank you, Ms. Vanderhuis. Roll call, Ms. Whitman.
Mr. Barxtown?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Vanderhuis. Item 10C, Workforce Investment Board Ride Solution Grant Appropriation. Ms. Vanderhuis.
Yes, this is also another grant. It's a continuation of a grant that we received in FY2017 and they have continued that. It is a joint grant between the West Piedmont Workforce Development Board and the Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission. And our portion of that grant for our WIB would be $47,522.12. And as fiscal agents, Pennsylvania County would have to have that money appropriated to the WIB's budget for FY2018 in order for them to expend those funds. And again, this is all a grant-funded amount and it does not require a local match.
Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve and appropriate a total of $47,522.12 as set forth in the attached budget document to the Workforce Investment Board budget.
I have a second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mr. Barxtown. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, Ms. Whitman.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barxtown?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Item 10D, Performance Agreement with Parkco International LLC.
I'll pinch hit on this because Mr. Rowe's on the road today. Before you, on page 110 through page 114, you have the local performance agreement for Parkco International LLC. They are the umbrella company that owns Doomsday Tackle. As you recall, previously, the board similarly held a public hearing to sell the Fox and Hot Dog Chatham movie theater to Doomsday for $50,000. Part of the deal that was struck by Mr. Rowe and approved by the board, they were to get $25,000 when they had met some measurements relating to cleaning out the building, beginning demolition, beginning construction, hiring some employees. They have met that. This local performance group also will grant them additional $25,000 once they have been issued a certificate of occupancy and then open for a period of six months. This $50,000 potentially is coming from the original purchase price of the building. If you've got any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve a performance grant in the amount of $25,000 to Parkco International and Doomsday Tackle for meeting their first project milestone as they establish an interactive retail tackle in the Science Center in the Old Chatham Movie Field.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barxtown, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Whitman.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Item 10E, Resolution 2017-10-03 Tobacco Commission, South Side Allocation Grants, Shell Building. You go ahead with this. Mr. Seitz?
I'll also pinch hit for Mr. Rowe tonight since he's that busy working for the county. Mr. Rowe is also working on a tobacco application. This one, incidentally, will be submitted under Pennsylvania County's heading as opposed to the regional authority. And one of the things that we have run into as we've been successful in locating some recent projects is that we have developed a shortage of shell buildings. Almost every company that comes along now wants a shell building so that they can get started quickly. So we are proposing an application to create a 40,000-square-foot shell building in the Kane Creek Industrial Park, which is a rental property, and it's in a high-demand area. It also has the benefit of we've got a graded pad that's already funded and already graded there so that we don't have that cost involved in the shell, shell building construction. What we are proposing in this application is to seek the grant for one and a half million from the Tobacco Commission and then seek outside financing options for the remaining one and a half million of the approximately $3 million shell building. So again, in this, tonight, we're asking for you to approve the resolution. The resolution is dated 2017-10-02 and it authorizes submission of the application. And if you see in your board packet that we are not anticipating an initial cash outlay on this project, well, we will seek funding and see who offers the best deal. And ultimately, there will be some lease-type structure that we will bring back to you in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Seitz. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Resolution 2017-10-02 for Tobacco Commission Southern Area Economic Development Grant that will be used to construct a $40,000-square-foot shell building in Kane Creek Center.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mr. Barxtown. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Whitman.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barxtown?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Item 10G, Request for Public Hearing to Event Pennsylvania County Code Section 2-22, Running at Large Designation in Restricted Areas to Include Green Farm and Road. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's been a request that an area encompassing 62 property owners on Green Farm Road be designated no dogs running at large. As you're aware, it requires a majority of the property owners to agree to that designation prior to it being approved by the board. As of this date of printing, 30 of 62 property owners have signed in favor, so it's not at majority presently. However, they have requested that a public hearing be scheduled for November 28th to consider the request.
Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I move to direct staff to advertise a public hearing for a proposed amendment to include Green Farm Road in Section 2.22-22, Running at Large Restriction in a Designated Area of the Pennsylvania County Code.
I'll give a second for discussion.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Blackstock.
Any... Mr. Hunt, correct me if I'm wrong, but any past, we didn't advertise a public hearing until the petition had a majority of the signatures.
Yeah, I was just talking, you're correct. I was just talking to Mr. Smith off-line about, I think that staff would, before we spent money and wasted money on a public hearing, we would ensure that they had at least 50% of property owners. Because right now, they're short. But yes, you're correct. We typically do not advertise unless they have 50% or more signed up on this.
Mr. Barber?
Yes, sir, Mr. Warren, I agree with Mr. Blackstock. I oppose this. I mean, that's what we've got rules for. I don't think we should be discussing it because we haven't met the minimal criteria. That's not fair to anybody else, and they do it to do. I think we need to wait until they get the majority.
I'll rescind the recommendation.
You rescind your second, Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
We'll bring it back after we get the right number of signatures.
Very much.
If.
Yes.
Oh, we have item 11 Appointments, Appointments to Planning Commission, Stanton River District Representative.
Let me get straightened out here. We've done so much tonight. Don't want to get this wrong. This fellow can vote for me.
This is number 11A. Number 124.
Yeah, I got it. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve, pointing Timothy W. Dudley as the Stanton River District Representative under the Planning Commission for a four-year term beginning November 1st, 2017 until October 1st, 2021. Mr. Dudley is present in the audience. Mr. Dudley, stand up.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Whitman.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barxtown?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. We're doing item 11D, Performance for Industrial Development Authority of the Chatham Blair's District.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Dr. Joey Fawcett as the Chatham Blair's District Representative on the Pennsylvania County Industrial Development Authority for a four-year term that will commence December 1st, 2017 through November 30th, 2021.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Scares, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion from the board? I'll just say, this is my district and this is a reappointment. Dr. Fawcett has an outstanding job and he's very enthused about economic development and very engaged with the committee, so I appreciate his role as to serve him. Roll call, Ms. Whitman.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barxtown?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. We're doing Performance for Industrial Development Authority, Townsfield District Representatives.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make motion, reappoint Ronnie Abel for a four-year reassignment.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barber, seconded by Mr. Blackstock. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Whitman.
Mr. Barxtown?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barxtown?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Do we have any matters carried over from the work session, Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir, we have. Thank you. For our announcement, we'll start with Mr. Barxtown this time. Thank you, Mr. Barxtown. Mr. Davis?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Scares?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say last week, we had an interesting week. We had a lot of input from the Fire and Rescue on a proposed public hearing we were going to have, and we certainly heard what the concerns they had to have. I attended an emergency meeting of the Fire and Rescue Association last Monday and took all those concerns and made sure it was given to all the board members. And we came back, attended the Ringgold, I guess, community meeting with Fire Chief Mike Neal, and I think a lot of information was given out at that point. I hope we can get past all the misinformation that was out there and do a better job of communicating with you guys. I hope you know that I think I can speak for everyone on this board that we're going to do everything we can to make sure that the Fire and Rescue Association is happy. As an all-volunteer force, we really, truly understand what sacrifices you guys are making. But I think we need to do a better job of communicating where we want to go, where we want to take the county. And just keep in mind, we're trying to do the best things for the all constituents in the county. So I don't think we'll ever do anything without making sure you guys understand exactly what's going to happen in the future. And we're getting ready to hire a public safety coordinator, and I hope all of this misinformation that got out there, we don't have that again. I want to make sure that you guys are on board with everything we're doing. So have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Scares. Mr. Blackstock?
I'm going to pursue a resolution, but I want to recognize him tonight. Daniel LaNea was from the Grit Community, which is a suburb of Hurt, was recently named Auctioneer of the Year for Virginia, which is quite an honor. And so I want to recognize Daniel and his accomplishments. He continues, he's part of economic growth over there. and his accomplishments. He continues, he's part of economic growth over there. We recently changed the ordinance so he could hold a rodeo over there because we didn't have anything coveted on his property. So, really excited about that. Likewise, I don't want to go into a lot of detail. I think Mr. Scares did a great job of representing the board. I'd also like to thank Mr. Warren, an account administrator, for meeting with the group down at Ringgold, am I right? And any other board member that went out and discussed and talked with our fire and rescue folks about what transpired. I feel that the board as a whole and the county could have done a better job of communicating with fire and rescue. Our fire and rescue people are essential in providing these services to the citizens of Pennsylvania County. They put in a tremendous amount of hours, volunteer time, night and day. My grandfather would hang me by the heels if he thought that I was doing something to oppose or go against the fire department down at Renan. He was one of the people that helped start that, and I know that was one of the things he was most proud of. I think working together, the board, county officials, and fire and rescue, and the citizens, we can come up with something that works for everybody. And when we pick up the phone, we'll know that somebody is going to respond for EMS call. And I'd like to point out that as far as I know, any fire call that's, anybody that's requested somebody there on the scene for a fire in this county for up to teen years, it's always been a response. So, I want to say personally, thank you to the volunteers, and I'm excited about moving forward. The board can't afford to always give you what you want as a request. We have to set priorities, just like in other departments. But I think that we're all reasonable people, and we need to work together.
Mr. Hagman?
Well, about the only thing I got to say is, I hope the planning committee gives some of these planning jobs to somebody else. And that's all.
Mr. Barber?
Hi, man.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. I would just say, because of the similar comments from Mr. Scares and Mr. Blackstock, obviously, we all know that our fire and rescue departments are on my two of us, and they've done a great job. I do think Mr. Blackstock used a really good word in that sort of working together. We've got to work together. And both sides need to always keep out in the forefront that it's all about the citizens. It's all about the service to the citizens. So, going forward, I think we won't have any problems working together and moving forward. You know, I will say that we probably could have been better about our information process. We do have to sit for RDS and all. And I also thank staff along the line, not only for that particular project, but for all the projects. Mr. Smith, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Dad. You've done a great deal of work. We spent a lot of time in a work session at night that was very productive. We had some closed sessions that entails, I think, we like, even on the development projects. And everyone knows here, we're passionate about that because that's key to our future. We want to keep our government touch here. We spend a lot of money educating those folks, as Dr. Miller can tell you out there. We spend a lot of money educating those folks. And we get them educated. Our school system does great job, as is indicated by 18 of 18 people fully accredited. But then, we tend to lose them to other localities because we don't have the things here to keep them here. So, we want to do the best job we can. And we want to work with all of our departments throughout the county to continue to move forward, to strive to make Pennsylvania County number one county in the state of Virginia. This board has been saying that now for at least a year or so, so we want to continue with that thing. We know you all believe in it, too. So, still a lot of work to be done. And along with you, working with you and with your help, we do believe we can get there. We've got great citizens, and it's a lofty goal, but you've got to set your goals high if you want to reach them. So, that's where we're trying to head. Also want to thank, that's indicative, tonight, Robert Mills being in Georgia. A big compliment to him. You know, you take a little more of Pennsylvania County, it just goes to reinvigorate us, I think, to know that we can do the best county in the state. And maybe we're setting our goals too high when you see him go out and win a national award, so.
You mean too low?
Too low, I mean, too low. I meant too low. You're right, Mr. Blackstock. Maybe we're setting the bar too low, but we'll get to be the number one in the state, and then we'll change the goal so that we're the number one in the nation. But it's, and I will say this, we collectively, I promise you, we're trying to do the best job we can. Do we make mistakes? Absolutely. We're not perfect. But this board, I will have to say, it has been a pleasure to serve with each and every one of these gentlemen. And we're working well together. We communicate a lot. We keep each other informed and updated. And do we always agree? No. But I didn't always agree with my family members all the time. So, we agree to disagree, but we're respectful and appreciative of each other's service. And we want you to know that we're out there with the intentions of one thing, doing the best job we can for the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We will continue to do that from this board. Also, I do have one request of everyone's here tonight. We're having a reoccurring problem in Pennsylvania County, and especially, we've got all of our fire and rescue folks here, and you all have strong networks of the last. It's been reached out, we've been reached out to by our school system. Dr. Miller, you're sitting on that board now, that they're having a problem with folks not observing the stopped school bus. There's a lot of fatalities nationally every year because people do not observe that. So, if you would help spread the word that we need to be complying with that law, there are going to be some changes coming to help our law enforcement enforce that law. We believe so. But please, if you could help spread the word to the community, because the one thing we all want is, we don't want to have it in the paper that one of our children have been killed because somebody wasn't observing those laws. So, please help us get that message out to our community. Now, that being said, I'm free for the night. Mr. Warren, Mr. Sherman?
Mr. Davis went down there on the fire line, too. I want to thank him for going down there to Ringgold, too.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Also, it's, any reports from county administrators?
Two items, just for public consumption. We discussed some financial things during our work session, and we're going to make available a PowerPoint that was presented that compares our county against other counties of like size, both in population and in area. And we found some pretty enlightening information about our financial, our financial state as it compares to others. And then also, I want to bring to your attention a very enlightening short presentation that was made by Mr. Hicks, kind of outlining the cost of our solid waste green box system. And we are slowly starting to retire that system and try to find efficiencies. We spend over a quarter of a million dollars a year maintaining the green box sites. We've invested a great amount of money in compactor sites, and we are trying to reduce cost and improve efficiency in that service. And we'll make this item available online also. That's all. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Hunt, you have everything.
No, sir.